Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Before we start praying tonight, I just want to, I don't know if everybody knows about this, but the former head of Christ Community School, her son, and she was a friend of the city, she came by here a couple of times, and she's no longer with Christ Community School, obviously, but she was involved in the city and came by a couple of different times. Her son, Carson, is battling cancer. He's 16 years old, I believe. It just was on my heart, it's been on my heart all week, and I knew that we were going to be coming to this meeting tonight, and being that she was what I like to call our strategic partners, or one of our strategic partners, and we talk about that a lot, there we have residents, we have staff members, but we also have strategic partners that we become very close to, and we care a great deal about them because they invest in our city in their own way. And so she was one of those strategic partners, and her son is doing better now, but he's going to be in a long, hard battle. And so as we pray tonight, I just, if you feel it on your heart, say a quick prayer for him as well, his name's Carson, and we sure hope that he can see his way through this. And like I said, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. So, dear Lord, we come before you tonight, and as always, we want to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for your love, for your grace, and for your forgiveness. We know that life's not always going to be easy, we know that you didn't promise us easy, but we also know that as long as we walk in the direction that we feel like you're pulling us in, and we're doing the things that you put on our heart that we should do, to do the right way, that in the end, that we can trust in you and trust in your grace and your forgiveness and your love. So we're going to make our way through this agenda tonight, and we're going to try to do our best job to fulfill the commitments that we promised our residents, our staff members, and our strategic partners, and we're not always going to be perfect, and we're not always going to be right, but we're going to do things that we think that you are calling us to do. We pray all these things in your son's name, and all God-people said.
Amen.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. So we will start with item five, which is our citizens forum, and obviously, our citizens forum is a little bit different right now into these circumstances. So if you're listening on YouTube, you can call into the citizens forum by calling 832-585-8138. You will be asked to identify yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak on either agenda or non-agenda items. The council is not able to deliberate with you, obviously, just as if you were here in person, and if you don't get the chance to call in in this citizens forum, we will still have a second citizens forum at the end of the meeting. So once we've gone through all the agenda items, and you've gotten here, all of the discussion, then if you would like to call in and comment on those agenda items, you're more than welcome to. So once again, that number's 832-585-8138. And I believe we have one caller on the line, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We do have one caller on the line, I believe that's Ms. Jean Teague. Jean, are you there?
Hang on, I'll bring her up. Well, Ms. Teague, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Jean, if you would please, just state your name for the record, and try to speak as loud as you can so the folks on YouTube can hear you, and you have three minutes to comment on either agenda or non-agenda items.
My name is Jean Teague.
Go ahead, Jean.
Are you ready for me?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor and Council, I sent each of you a screenshot of the city's YouTube channel. You may want to check the legality of the YouTube channel posting of tonight's meeting in the typographical areas that state the meeting started at 9:00 PM. Secondly, I wanted to ask about the pool reopening. Is the capacity considered for the swimming pool, or is the capacity the swimming pool area? And will you extend the hours opening earlier in the day since the sharks have canceled their season? Since the capacity has been reduced, and residents may not have access to the pool at their opportune time? Thirdly, when is City Hall reopening to the public? And lastly, regarding the agenda item to discuss the water study and the mayor's social media post referencing social media posters, I'd like to put on the record that the information I posted came straight from the city's agenda packet. And I'd like to ask why the city is not having a town hall meeting on the debt or water rate increases? At the very least, a virtual town hall could be done.
Anything else, Jean?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, well, like I said, if you didn't get a chance to call in for the first citizens forum, we will have a second one at the end of the meeting, and please feel free to call in for that one. With that, we will move to item six, which is council inquiry. Does anybody have anything that they need to bring up right now? Nope? Okay. Then we will move to item, sorry, we'll move to item seven, then, which is promotion of Sergeant Jake Revers. I almost said it, and I didn't do it. I came very close. It would have been fun.
Counsel Acting Chief Dunlap is going to pin the badge on Lieutenant Revers.
He's going to speak, give him the microphone.
I am.
Microphone.
So Sergeant Revers is being promoted to lieutenant to town.
I'm going to try not to poke him. No promises.
Let me know. Oh.
Greatly appreciate all that, appreciate all that y'all do for us. Is my mic working? I feel like I'm, maybe y'all can hear, and I just didn't feel like I can hear, but I'm having a computer issue up here, so I'm going to go off of the paper agenda packet. If I miss something, please feel free to let me know. So that will get us to item eight, which is discussion regarding monument sign designs. This is a discussion item only, and I don't know whose this is, but I'm going to assume it's probably Joseph's.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir, Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. As council may recall, back in February, staff brought forward a proposal with Landology to do some design work for an updated entrance monument sign for the city. The reason staff brought this forward at that time was due to an added lane along Six Pines with the Lifetime Development. They're going to have to relocate the existing city monument, which, we actually have a picture of that, or a similar looking sign on the screen right now, it's that top image. At that time, staff predicted that they would not be able to move the monument in one piece, and that came true. They attempted to move it, and it fell to pieces. So luckily, we were kind of already ahead of schedule on the design there, and Jonathan with Landology is actually here, as we discuss this, if you have any questions regarding this. But I'm going to go over a quick, I won't be able to do as well as Jonathan does, but I'll do a quick intro of the two options, and the two concepts that are being presented here. There's a concept A, and first, this image here has a map on the right-hand side which shows the locations of our existing city limit entrance monuments. They're on Research Forest, Six Pines, Pinecroft, and Medical Plaza. As I said before, they have a similar appearance of what you see at the top there, and what you actually see below is one of our new neighborhood entrance signs that were installed several years ago. And this is the reason that staff initially went back to Landology, because we thought it would, it would be nice to keep some of the same elements that we have already done in our neighborhood entrance signs, and carry some of those elements over into a new city limit monument. Chris, if you can go to the next page. So this shows some of the locations. On the left is where we have a Research Forest Drive, it's in the median. Pinecroft is also in the median. Scroll down again. So this is the concept A, and you can see a lot of the elements have carried over. The coloration of the brick and the accent pieces on the brick are going to match what the existing neighborhood entrance signs looks like, and you can also see the similarities between the sign. The sign just shows the city logo, it's the updated logo, and also, you have a welcome as you move into the city, and then a thank you for visiting as you leave the city. You can kind of see a perspective of the size of that with the silhouettes, and there's some later images that actually put those in some of the locations we're looking at to give a better perspective. If you can go to the next page. So this shows that concept A, and a couple of the existing locations where we currently have signs, just to give you an idea of what it can look like. If you'll go to the next page. And again. This shows concept B. Again, you keep the pillars on the bottom are going to be the same coloration, capstone colors that we have on the existing, and then you have the four steel pillars going up with the crossbar holding the sign in the middle. A little bit taller design on this one, as you can see from the profile, and again, if you go to the next, we can see that plugged into an actual location. And if you'll scroll, I think there's maybe one or two more pages. So that shows you, if you look here, kind of puts all the pieces together in one page, it's kind of a summary. You can see up in the top right what we have, the bottom right, some of the elements we're trying to match with existing new signs, and then you have your concept A and concept B to the left. And if you see down there at the bottom, you can actually see each one of these and their sizes, those are just scale of how they'll be sized to one another. Estimated construction cost for concept A for the sign is $35,000. Estimated construction cost for concept B is around $30,000. And as I said before, if you have questions specific to design or things like that, Jonathan is also here as well to help answer any questions.
Is there a reason the concept, so I'm going to voice my opinion here, I like the concept A, but is there a reason that that is because the bottom of the sign is like 10 inches off the ground, whereas concept B looks like it's several feet, a couple feet off the ground? Is that something that can be adjusted? And then how does the height of the sign affect traffic view? Considering it's in a median approaching intersection?
So to address your first question, you could always add to the bottom of the pillars if you wanted to increase the height of that sign.
The reason I ask is I often see, you know, something, you know, we get a bunch of rain, we can't get, many times that thank you for visiting, or sometimes the ground growth can get high, or just from a visibility perspective, just to get the sign off the ground.
Yeah, that was my opinion, too, that I liked option B better because it was higher, and you could see it much easier than option A. And quite frankly, I said this in the spring, the original monument, I didn't even know they were there, because they were so low and overgrown, not overgrown, but the boxwood was coming up pretty high, so, yeah, I don't know, I liked the taller one.
And that's actually something Jonathan and I-
And the one that's $5,000 cheaper.
Well, we're not paying for this, right?
So, correct. So the one that's going to be reinstalled at Six Pines is going to be done by Lifetime Fitness, but I want to get those prices out there because, you know-
Sure. As we replace the other ones, we're going to match.
Right, right. You know, the older monuments, they work, you see them sometimes.
Let's be very clear, though, we are not replacing every monument in the city. This is just a design concept, and the only one that's actually going to be built is the one at Lifetime Fitness.
Correct.
Right. I like the A, but I would like it higher for these reasons, so, because I like the pillars, I like the protective look of it.
The coloration on option B, then, what's the color scheme on the sign? Is it the dark wood color, or is it something else?
On the sign, the metal sign itself is going to match what the existing looks like.
Okay, all right.
I'll say dark brown, there's probably a specific color for it.
And the risers and everything, that's still going to be wood tones.
Right, right.
Was it going to be the same dark brown, or is it going to be wood?
Nope.
It won't affect your price.
Yeah, okay.
I myself like option B as well, I just like the way it looks, and I think you could have one sign with two faces on each side, in other words, one for entering and one for leaving, is that-
Well, you do the same thing with A, it's a double-sided sign. A is a double-sided sign, too.
Right.
Option A actually is two sides.
Yeah, it has two signs.
Oh, it's two.
Yeah, we can-
The way that it's built.
Option A is at an angle, correct? Is that at an angle?
What's that?
Option A, is it on an angle, or is it straight on?
Both could probably be at an angle.
Actually, both of them, I think, are generally shown on an angle, because that's the way the existing ones sort of are positioned, and so we tried to repeat that again. Option A, as was mentioned, actually does have two of the, what we call it, the hanging ticket signs, if you will, and that's actually adding to the cost of why those are different.
They're two separate monuments?
There's two separate hanging sign elements that are lighted boxes.
I see.
On either side of the two columns, as opposed to the second, we call it the quad column option, it's a little more transparent, you can see around it and underneath it a little bit better, and there's only one hanging sign with two messages with one box.
Okay.
That would be my choice.
You both have looked at it, just.
Statically, I like B better.
Well, a point that several of the councilmen have brought up is the existing signs are pretty squat and low, and, you know, I know the constant battle to keep the bushes trimmed down so you can see the thank you for visiting or welcome, or the bottom of our logo, because those bushes grow quickly, and it quickly covers part of our logo with existing signs.
And I'm also thinking of Wellman, and we got one at Wellman Road, and of course, Pinecroft, Pinecroft, right?
There's one at Pinecroft, Research Forest, Medical Plaza, and Six Pines.
Right, Research Forest as well. So we may want to consider different plantings, under the signs, so it doesn't grow so much.
Right, and Jonathan and I discussed that as, you know, when we look at the plantings. I'm not putting quick growing bushes directly under our logo.
Any questions? Kicking over trash cans down here. I would assume, then, that staff is probably looking for a little direction as we move past the, do we want to bring this back for an actual vote? Is that what you're going to need, Joseph?
Right, we can bring this back for an action item. It looks like concept B is leaning toward a little more, but we'll bring it back as an action item, for sure.
Why don't you bring A back elevated a little bit, since we had a couple councilmen ask for that, bring B back as well, and then they can vote between A and B, and just see which one they like better.
That'll be perfect.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, we are moving on, then, to item nine, which is discussion regarding the water sewer rate study. Real quick, before we get too far into this, let me just point out a couple of key things. This is a discussion-only item, so there has been a lot of conversation about why is council raising the rates when no one can come to the meeting, or no one's able to voice their opinion? This is a discussion-only item, so no one's able to vote on anything tonight. This came, this actually came up back in October during Budget Workshop, and a couple of us had asked several times to do a rate study, because we wanted to see what the true cost of water is. Not saying whether for or against, but if you subsidize your water and sewer fund with general fund dollars, then you don't really have a true understanding of what your true cost of water is. So what's tonight's discussion is about is trying to give us an idea of what is our true cost of water in the city. So this is just a discussion-only item, and it's just for information. So having said that, it's just a straight-to-Joseph or John item. Joseph, okay, we'll start with you.
I'll do the long intro. There is a lot of information to cover. I actually wrote down some notes, because I want to make sure I covered everything and didn't miss anything. So there's a lot of info to cover, but I'd like to take some time to focus on a few details of the rate study before we start our conversation. First of all, I want to focus on, and much to what the mayor was saying, this discussion is about the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. The rate study affects only the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and that's what we're going to be discussing tonight with this rate study, which is basically the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, those are the dollars collected from the water customers and sewer customers to cover the expenses of that infrastructure. This rate study was completed, as you know, in conjunction with the five-year CIP, and that was done so city council can have better planning and better oversight of what the rates need to be, knowing what the expected expenses are going to be, not only operational maintenance, but capital. Now, the projects that staff selected for the CIP, they not only keep our water system operating at top capacity, but a lot of these are requirements either through water conservation or through TCEQ state requirements to keep us in compliance. Specifically, the $6 million wastewater treatment plant improvement project, that is to keep us in compliance with TCEQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. So, you know, these projects are important, and they keep us from getting fined, but more importantly, they keep our treated water clean, keep the waters clean downstream. In the packet, you'll see that staff listed some of the assumptions that were used in this study. I want to highlight a few of those key assumptions. First of that, first of those assumptions that staff and blower engineering use when determining the rate study, is that the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund is not a for-profit business. Ideally, the revenues you bring in are going to cover the expenses that you have going out. It's not there to make money, and that was one of the key assumptions in determining these rates, was to cover expenses. Another assumption then was that no other funding source was considered for this rate study other than the potential of a loan or a bond. And another assumption was that the, you know, projected revenues, you do the best you can, but they're very fluid, you know, revenues can be greatly affected by outside environmental factors. An example I'll give is if you have a very dry drought year, your revenues are going to increase because people are watering their lawns more, and you're getting more money. That's completely outside of predictability or control of staff when trying to determine these rates. On the flip side, with your expenses, staff does the best they can to determine what our expected operation maintenance costs are, again, our CIP, our capital improvement plan, debt services, but again, there are some unexpected repairs that can come up, which in this field of work and infrastructure can get very expensive very quickly. So those are some of the key assumptions that were used to help guide this rate study. So with that background and the assumptions covered, I want to move into what the initial proposal is here for discussion. And the initial proposal is to increase the water sewer rates to meet the future costs of our O and M, operation maintenance, our debt service, and our projects in the capital improvement plan. Staff recommends to seek a loan for a portion of one of those major capital improvement projects through the Texas Water Development Board's Clean Water State Revolving Fund in order to obtain the best available interest rates for that largest project, which is a $6 million project. So that's the initial proposal here. That's the end of my introduction, I'm sure you have a lot of questions for us. Staff, blower engineering, we're here to answer any of those questions, and welcome any feedback that you can give us.
So are you going to turn it over to John, then, to go through this presentation? Is that what, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joseph and Mayor and Council. Is it okay if I stand up?
Sure, absolutely.
Just a couple things to add, Joseph did a nice job covering the evolution of this project. We have completed the study. I sent it to Kathy on Monday, waiting for comments back. We'll address the comments when we get them. Any questions that you may have tonight, or comments that would need to be included, we'll include those also, and hope to have a final document sent back to Kathy for distribution probably next week, certainly before the next council meeting. We concur with the recommendation from your staff, by the way, I want to compliment your staff again, this has been a real team effort, again. Kathy, Joseph, and Lisa worked with my staff and myself all the way through the process, this has been going on for two months, we didn't start it two weeks ago, it's been a kind of a long process, but we're coming to the end, and we're here to discuss it tonight for you all to give us input. One of the recommendations that we're making is to, if you decide to adjust the rates, no matter if you go with our recommendation, which would include the Water Development Board loan that Joseph mentioned, we recommend making those effective October 1st, which lines up with your fiscal year. So there's time to go through this, and study it, and tweak it wherever you choose to tweak it, to make sure we're addressing the needs of the city and the citizens. He mentioned that there's no NDD funding considered, this is straight revenue, and our goal and our task that your staff gave us was to make the revenue and the expenses match equal, as far as your Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund goes. So I've got a couple of exhibits I'd like to show you, and then here to answer questions when we wrap up. So can you pull up-
The graphs or the chart, the rate?
Just pull up the rates first. This was delivered today, was not in your packet. By the way, I did send to Kathy on Friday, and you have this in your packet, a summary letter, which is what all we've talked about so far. We thought it would be important to kind of give example billing, to make sure everybody understood what the impacts would be if you approve our recommendation, and obviously, there are lots of things that could be done to have different rates, but what you have on the screen here, existing rates, this is for a low-volume user, 3,000 gallons per month. A lot of your residential customers in the wintertime would be around this number, okay? So if they use 3,000 gallons per month, their total water bill is $16.91 per month. Now, let's talk about the water bill, because that includes the water fees, the sewer fees, and GRP fees, groundwater reduction plan, your contract with City Panorama Village, and then also loan store groundwater pumping fees, all included in your water bill. A lot of your residential customers in the wintertime would be around this number, okay? So if they use 3,000 gallons per month, their total water bill is $16.91 per month. Now, let's talk about the water bill because that includes the water fees, the sewer fees, and GRP fees, groundwater reduction plan, your contract with City Panorama Village, and then also loans to our groundwater pumping fees, all included in your water bill. The rates that we're talking about are the water and sewer rates. So $16.91 a month existing. If our proposed rates are adopted with the TWDB financing, the total water bill will go to $22.91 a month. So that's a $6 increase per month, what we're proposing. I don't want to talk about that option because we're not going to consider it. We had two options that we were looking at, and we're not going to consider Option 1. We've already recommended Option 2, so that's what we need to talk about. So can you go to the next rate schedule? So this is more of an average monthly use for residential and 7,000 gallons per month. So let's look at the existing rates for 7,000 gallons per month. This would be $35.95. If you could scroll up just a little bit. With our recommendation, the water bill would go up to $50.45, so that's a $14.50 increase at this rate. Now, these rates are tiered rates, so the more water you use, the more expensive the incremental rate is per 1,000 gallons. And that's important when you talk about heavy users and commercial customers. So if you can go to the pie graph, we're going to show the distribution and how your revenue is divided with residential and commercial. So the top pie graph here, these are existing rates. You can see that the residential customers, they produce revenue of about 19% of the total, and then the commercial customers produce 81%. So you're blessed with a lot of commercial users that have higher use, higher incremental rates, and that's why you end up with the residential customers paying 19% of the total, which is, that's a nice benefit for your citizens here in Shenandoah. If you can go up to the next pie graph, this is our proposed rates. I'm sorry, move one more. That's without the loan. This is with the loan, what we're proposing, and you can see that it's almost the same. I mean, it dropped to 18% on residential monthly revenue. So we manage the rates intentionally to be that way, to not change what the residential customers are producing on your revenue side. And so I think this is important, you know, everybody to know and understand that the commercial customers in the city are paying for most of the revenue that's generated. And if you could go to the bar graph. Okay. This first bar graph, what we were trying to show here is just a comparison of Shenandoah's existing and some proposed potential future rates. This was without the Texas Water Development Board loan, but just to look at the picture, we put Oak Ridge North, their current rates, Conroe, City Montgomery, and Rayford Road Mud, which is Imperial Oaks, kind of as a comparison. You can see that your existing and proposed would still be less than everybody else.
Can you go to the next slide then of the option that you're going to go with?
I'm sorry?
Could you bring up the other slide that has the financed one?
Yes, it's next. If you could bring that up. Well, this is commercial. Let me just speak about that. Existing, proposed, commercial is higher than the surrounding communities, but that makes sense because you have a higher percentage of commercial users, and they're, most of them are heavy water users, so this is in line with what the reality is within the city. If you could go to the next one, this is the one that includes the Water Development Board loan. You can see that Shenandoah's existing rate's still the same, proposed is less with the loan, and you're still lower than anybody as far as residential goes. And so, again, this was intended just to be a comparison. The 10,000 gallons that we used, just to be consistent with everybody, that's more water than most of your residential will ever use, except during a drought or maybe August and September. Most residential are going to be around 7,000 or less. So this is kind of skewed when you take into account the 10,000, but we were doing it on a comparison basis only. So any questions so far?
So for clarification, do the Facebook users, is 46% and 67%, that's really irrelevant, right?
It's irrelevant in considering a couple of things. First, it won't be 63% or whatever the number was. I purposely didn't put percentages in here for that reason. Secondly, when, for example, if you look at the 3,000 gallon per month user, $6 increase from 12 to 18 or whatever it was, I mean, it's a 50% increase, but it's $6 a month. So, you know, you have to consider the real number.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So it's fair to say that we'll still have the lowest water rates in Montgomery County?
We haven't looked at the entire county, but you're close to the bottom, and you will still be close to the bottom, yes. The other thing I'd like to reiterate that Joseph touched on is the $6 million project, that's over half of the CIP projects in terms of value. And that is going to be a mandated project by the TCEQ because you're approaching your 75% capacity, and the project is to increase your capacity by almost 50%. Once you get to 75%, the TCEQ mandates that you proceed with the design, and once you get to 90% of your capacity, then you have to be in construction. So Joseph put it in the CIP. He did a great job. Sorry to brag on you in public, but the way he spread it out over a three-year period, it fits perfectly with where you are on what you're treating now and what the future demands are going to be. So we'll be finished with the project before we get into the 90%, probably.
Yeah, that's why we asked for the CIP, so we'd have level planning for things like this, so.
Right.
Good work, guys.
Right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, as I said, you know, it was great working with your staff. We'll have the final report sent to Kathy within a week or so, and we're looking forward to getting comments back from everybody so we can...
I have a question, but it was for Lisa. How much do we have in our general fund reserve right now? Is it 11 months?
It's 11 months, isn't it?
No.
Seven man, six hundred seventy-nine.
That's probably not quite, that might be 11 months.
So in our general fund, we have about 7.6, and I forgot I didn't do the days operating, but I think on last council, we had about 260 or 80 days, maybe, so we're close. Maybe it was three. I'll get you those definite numbers.
We're pretty close. We're just over 10 months.
Yeah, I knew we were somewhere in and around 11.
Which I'd rather be a year.
There was one other thing I forgot to mention. I talked to the Texas Water Development Board about your project. They had at the beginning of the year $520 million for projects just like this. There's enough funding for your $6 million project. I asked them what the current interest rates are for this type of project, and he said a 30-year term, you'd be close to 0% interest. And so we used a percent and a half in the models to generate the rates, conservative, and we used a 20-year amortization term, so that could be tweaked also. But one of the reasons that we're recommending the loan is obvious, the interest rates are never going to be lower, and so it's a good time to access that resource if council chooses to do that.
So I have a couple of questions. I was going to wait until everybody else has asked theirs. I didn't want to hog all the time, but if anybody's got any other questions. But one thing, and I'm sure there's some reason why I'm just not picking up on this, but if it's a $6 million project, and I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just curious how we got to the math, why are we borrowing $1 million for a $6 million project?
You would be borrowing $6 million.
Okay, I completely misunderstood that. That's where, that was sort of what I was trying to figure out, was like, why are we only borrowing $1 million? Okay. Question number two is, did we somewhere in this study, did we actually come up with, and I guess this is what I was really looking more for when we first started talking about this, did we come up with what our true cost of water is? In other words, I know we supplement our projects a lot in the Water and Sewer Fund with general fund dollars. Did we go back and look at a historical analysis and say, okay, based on what we truly put into whatever those costs are, wherever the money came from, regardless, this is how much it costs to provide water? Did we do that somewhere in the survey, just for sort of a baseline?
We know, and it's in the report, what your operations and maintenance costs are, and then what the cost for the CIP program would be with a loan and without a loan. And so we have that in the study.
So I'm not so much talking about projecting going forward. I'd like to look at a historical number, as far back as we can go, you know, at least last year, but a three- or a five-year historical perspective that says, okay, this is how much, you know, water and sewer costs, regardless of where the money came from, whether we pulled it out of general fund, whether we charged it in your water rate, this is what it actually cost. And then, I think that creates a baseline for us, that then from there, we can say, okay, this is how much we're spending, and it doesn't matter where the money's coming from, it's all our money. It's whichever pot you're pulling it from, but it still costs money.
All right, it's going to be different every year, of course.
Well, sure.
And if you include the CIP every year, in this case, five years, it'll be different. Now, we looked at last year's budget and last year's cost, and we know what that was. I believe it was about 2.4 million.
Something like that?
Last year's cost, O&amp;M cost?
It was about 2.2.
2.2 million for just O&amp;M. And you had CIP projects last year. We didn't look at the funding breakdown, but I think MDD funded some, and then, and I think there were some fund transfers from the general fund. We can get that information for you. We didn't go back later, earlier than last year.
Maybe it's just the way my brain works. But I'm just thinking, you know, if, you know, 10,000 gallons, the true cost of 10,000 gallons worth of water over last year, or three years, or five years, or whatever, was $126 because we pulled money out of the general fund and we charged X, and our residents only pay whatever the number would have been, $75. You know, yes, you've been conditioned to paying $75 a month for 10,000 gallons worth of water, but that's not really the true cost of water. The true cost of water would have been, with all of these other factors involved, would have been X. And I don't know that anybody, you know, our residents, I think, they only know what they've been historically charged for, right? So, and I don't know that what we've ever really shown is, is this is how much money we were really paying for it. You know, maybe it wasn't on your water bill, but you're still paying for it because it's still coming out of your property tax, or it's coming out of sales tax dollars that we're not using for somewhere else. I mean, it's coming from somewhere.
That's a good point, and I think it's good information to look at. I don't remember if I mentioned that you haven't addressed your rates in 10 years. Did I say that before?
Yeah.
So November of 2020 will be the 10-year anniversary of your last rate change, but it would be good to go back 10 years and do exactly what you're talking about, Mayor. I think that would be a good exercise, and we can work with staff to do that.
Good point, Rich.
The only last question I was going to have was, is this something that we can wait and discuss and decide on during budget? It seems like a very budget-sensitive item, or are we getting too long in the tooth to wait that long?
It's my opinion that you can wait until your budget workshops. The only risk is the interest rates. If you decide to do financing, you know, are they going to go up any? Probably not. I don't think it's a high risk, so I think you could wait till your budget workshops to discuss this further. You know, as long as something's in place by October 1, if you choose to change the rates, maybe choose not to do anything, but we would recommend certainly adopting something by October 1 if you change anything.
Okay.
Should we apply, at least?
That's a good question, Jay.
I think we need to start moving. We can always, even though the loan's approved, we can always turn it down later. I'm of the opinion this is going to take, I mean, it's May, moving into June, we've got five meetings between now and budget.
Let's get the ball rolling.
Saying to wait for budget is really...
Not that far off. But that was my point.
We really need to kind of...
I don't disagree with that.
Keep rolling.
I don't think it hurts to apply.
You know, in August or July.
Probably doesn't cost much money.
Their fiscal year, they're on a September 1 fiscal year, and so the gentleman I talked to at Water Board, he encouraged us to get the application in before the end of August. And it'll take probably four to six months to get the loan approved from when we start the application process. So, yes, I'm glad you brought that up. It would be good to start the process, and you don't have to accept the loan. If you're awarded the loan, you don't have to accept it.
Well, there's a limited number of dollars that are available out there to begin with, so, I mean, you know.
I tried to get that...
But we'll uncover.
...the process, so better off we are.
Right, but we'll uncover our share.
Right.
I just think we need to move ahead, and we need to continue to have these discussions and meetings, and if we can get this other data, it just needs to be added on, you know...
Is that running in the background?
A June meeting, and July we can follow up on this so that when we hit budget, we can make a call.
And if my kids are watching, the fact that we used 11,000 gallons last month, and John said that's too much. Turn the water off when you're brushing your teeth, anyway. Side note. Okay, anybody got anything else?
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's a good thing that we've done the study. We've deferred doing this maintenance and taken this rate increase for far too long, so it's good to move forward and have this fund stand on its own.
Yeah, it's hard decisions nobody wants to make, but it's stuff that needs to be done.
How long will this new plant last, speaking of which?
That's one reason I chose 20 years on the loan amortization, because we consider the life of a plant 20 years typically. In reality, I mean, they do a great job of maintaining everything here, so it should last longer than that, but 20 years is an estimate.
And on a personal note, you know, most of us try not to borrow money. You know, you try to pay for things cash if you can, borrowing money, you know, you don't want to get in debt. From a city standpoint, you have to look at it, if you're borrowing, and this is just my belief, if you're borrowing money over a 20-year period for a 20-year lifespan of a particular project, then over those 20 years, the people who are using it are the people who are paying for it, not the people who lived prior to that and put tax dollars into the coffers that now you're spending on whatever this particular project is. So it's just something to think about when we're looking at this, the do's and don'ts of borrowing money as a city. As long as we're not paying an absorbent amount of interest, which sounds like we wouldn't be, then we're actually charging the users as they use, you know, this project if you borrow the money, so something to think about.
Well, I think from an investment perspective, if you've got cash, but you're making more money, and we are, we're making more money with our investments than we pay in interest, it's a no-brainer to borrow the money. And that's where we're at right now.
That's what I was going to say, when your interest rate's less than 1%, it's almost free money, so they're financing the project for us. I would, I'm probably more cautioned about engaging more residents in this concept as well. Obviously, today, if people look at, you know, what's going on outside and people losing jobs, and then we're thinking, oh, God, we're going to be increasing rates by $15 a month, and they're already on a fixed income, and so we're panicked about what's happening today. We have to be able to look ahead, but at the same time, take into consideration where people are today as well. And I think what you brought up, Mayor, as far as breaking down that cost of water and then where we've subsidized from in the past, we're not saying that we're not going to be subsidizing from those same vehicles in the future, and that everybody's rates is immediately going to be this change on October 1. At least I'm not. But it's information that we need to be able to bring together to decipher. This is the first time that the city's had an actual capital improvement project list that looks out past the fiscal year. So we're planning five years ahead. This is plans that go along with that five years from now. So it's perfect business sense. No, nobody likes increases in anything. I'm very fiscally conservative. I don't like making, you know, choices to borrow money. Obviously, under these circumstances, it obviously makes sense. Anytime you can give free money, you're crazy not to. But the second part of that is, you know, we really need to gather some additional information so our residents understand, one, again, where we've been bringing money in to subsidize the Water Sewer Fund. I'm a big believer that, you know, when it comes to government and government charging for services, whether it's building fees or water and sewer or whatever, they're nonprofit in my opinion. And so we're zero line item budget every single year, and we look at everything for what it is. And anytime that there's a revenue increase, that's a... And anytime that there's a revenue increase, that's a tax. I don't care what word you put in front of it, it is a tax to the citizen. So obviously, I don't think anybody that's up here is wanting to, to increase taxes to anybody, but obviously, we have to make sure that our water and sewer plant sustains itself, otherwise we have a whole nother issue. So, so there's a lot more discussion ahead. So those that are on Facebook or watching on YouTube, there, there are no final decisions. There'll be a lot of input, a lot of questions still to be asked. And I would encourage you to, to continue to ask those questions.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, John. John, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Mayor, we have Jackie on the line for the next item, I believe.
Okay, that will move us into item 10 then, which is discussion regarding the residential permit fee schedule. I'm going to assume Jackie can take this one?
Hello, Jackie, are you there?
I am.
Thanks for waiting patiently.
Yeah.
Yeah, turn your audio down, Jackie.
Yeah, I will. The audio's going on the YouTube too, so I can hear you, but I'll turn that off. I'll get on the...
Hi, Jackie.
Okay, we got it now. This was brought up at the last meeting by Councilman Fletcher, Mayor Wheeler, a desire to take another look at the residential fee schedule. I asked Jackie to map out the existing fee structure so you can see where we are, think about where you want to go. This is a discussion only. So you can talk about it tonight, think about it a little bit. If you have any questions, come back to staff and then we'll bring it back for a vote. As you can see right now, new, new residential homes and additions and pools greater than $100,000 do have fees. Part of the, and this is how it was presented previously to council and adopted. The, the rationale, in discussing with Jackie, the rationale behind the new homes and additions is that the, the, that the workload on inspections and staff is greater for additions and new homes as you extend foundation, plumbing, electrical, et cetera. It also covers the trades so that subcontractors won't have to come and pull, pay additional fees, pull separate permits. So that's a quick summary. It's, it, you'll see it on your agenda report here and Jackie can take any other questions that you may have.
Anybody got any questions? Ted, is this...
So, so yeah, I've gone back through and read it and really I think the only question is in regards to additions less than 100,000. So my understanding when this originally had come through and, you know, shame on me if I missed it then or all of us, because I think for the most part, everybody's intention was kind of the same and I could be wrong on that, but my understanding was that if we had a resident that was wanting to improve their property, that, you know, if, if that remodel, new pool, whatever was less than 100,000, that there would be zero permit fee charged. And I guess on, let me see what page it was, page two down, very last sentence says additions are defined as construction, which adds new air-conditioned space to the property. I'm not sure how many more inspections would be required. I mean, if we're adding foundation, if somebody's doing a remodel and they move a wall, then and they add electricity and they add HVAC and they add a, a new bathroom or whatever and they're doing it for less than 40 grand, I would presume that we would have all the same inspections as if we were doing ground up outside of the foundation. Is that correct?
Jackie, are you there? I know with foundation, you'll have to do a remodel.
I am, I am. The, the scope of the work on the additions would determine the extent of the inspection required. So a, a home that's adding fewer square feet would have a less impact on trade inspections and, and permanent inspections as far as the construction versus a large project on that scale. But unfortunately, with an addition, we don't have the, we don't have the ability to say, to put a threshold on there. So it's either all additions pay a fee or no additions pay a fee.
How many of these permits have we had in the last year?
Addition permits?
Yeah.
Let me run those real quick. I think there's just a handful of them. As of today, as of, a year ago today, there's been two residential additions.
So not a, not a big number anymore.
Is there, is there a difference in the fees for homestead versus non-homesteaded property?
Not when it comes to additions, no. All additions would be charge the base charge plus the 55 cents a square foot for the added space.
Homestead lets you pull your own permits.
Mm-hmm.
Ted, were we thinking about with existing home, additions on existing homes?
I believe that's...
You thought just waiving, waiving those fees? We've only got two of them.
Yeah, I, I was proposing that, you know, my understanding when we were doing this before...
I thought we, we did that, but...
No, well, not according to this, because as soon as you read that last sentence on page two, it's definitely additions are considered as new construction. So that would be my proposal is that, you know, I mean, our, our whole intent here is in everything that we do is to come back to the residents of Shenandoah and create benefits for them, especially if they're trying to improve their property. And, I mean, let's be real about that. Any, the only place in Shenandoah that we're going to do a, a home improvement with an addition on it most likely is going to be in the valley, which is the area that, you know, we strive to, to, to improve and beautify over and over again because everything else that's built around it's less than 10 years old. And so I, I think anything that we can do to beautify our city across the board is worth the investment. Obviously, we don't have a lot of these that are coming in that are new additions. We've had two in the, the last 12 months. So, you know, I, again, my intent initially, and I, I can't speak for everybody else that's here, but was that, you know, if you're doing a, a home improvement for 100,000 or less, whether it's a pool or, you know, you're remodeling or you're adding a bathroom or adding square footage, that as a resident here in Shenandoah, you would, would receive that benefit of not having the permit.
Yeah, and I think we actually waived that $100,000 cap because of, I mean, we sort of had to with the Texas law. I'm kind of, I come out from a different place, but I end up with the same, same spot in that I want, I want work permitted and I want it inspected.
Yes.
Because I don't want the person next door to me, you know, burning their house down because they did some shoddy work or they brought in some shoddy contractor. And removing fees lowers that barrier and encourages people to get permits, which follows up with get inspections, which means quality work will be done. And so that's why I'm a big fan of it. It's very little income, we're not, it's, it's worth it to me. It's a public benefit to have our residential homes inspected and the work be ensured that it's quality work. I mean, I'd, I'd be, I'd be in favor of, of removing, you know, all fees for additions. Obviously, new construction's a different issue, but, but remodeling and new additions, I, I, I don't see why we don't just waive those fees.
So I don't, I don't disagree with either of y'all. I, I'm curious what Jackie's take on this. If I had to guess, because you're right, we don't need, it's not necessarily the money. If I had to guess, Jackie, the concern would be how people could find a loophole in this if we're not careful?
Right, there's a potential in the future, you know, you've got properties that are, commercial entities come in, flip and, and sell, they, and they, and would too be entitled for a no-fee permit also. So we're not just looking at residential improvements by residents, but also what that would look like for in the future with, with the properties.
From a commercial development standpoint is what she's saying.
Is there a way to, to create a caveat there that says that that, I mean, for commercial, it's a, it's a separate issue?
Well, I think what she's saying is, is commercial home construction basically, not, not retail commercial, which I'm not sure that it matters if it's, if it's helping increase the value, what does it, you know, matter if, but if we were actually trying to save our residents' money, then we could put something in there along the lines of it has to be a residential homeowner, you know, some sort of, yeah, some sort of a homeowner cannot own more than one piece of property that they're remodeling or something. I mean, there's, there's, I, I would think, Bill, that there's something we could add into that to make sure that we don't get abused by somebody coming in and buying 10 houses and putting up a row of, you know, whatever, that they're trying, trying to claim that they're remodeling as opposed to just building some...
Well, exactly, Rich. What if, what if, if somebody buys a house, homesteads it, bulldozers, knocks it down, builds a whole new house? Seriously.
That, that, that's just an addition.
Yeah. If it's, well, if it's...
But then again...
Right.
I'm playing devil's advocate.
Oh, no, I, I get, and I think that's why Jackie, I think that's the point was, is we're trying to, trying to make sure that...
Talking about percent of, you know, percent of property.
Brad, I would say if you demolish more than 50% of that property, that we're talking new construction at this point, not...
Well, it's not an right issue.
Well, no, absolutely. I mean, that, that should be something that's addressed. And, and I'm not opposed to whether they have a homestead exemption or not.
Well, if you're a businessman and what if you...
Because even as a landlord, yeah.
To work at home and you own a house and you want to put a 5,000-foot extension for Ted Fletcher LLC and work at home, that's an addition.
That's, let me say...
I've just given two.
I think that you have some protection because of the $100,000 limit. Ted, what I was thinking is we could change the heading on page one to say residential remodels, additions and residential pools less than $100,000. That solves, I'm not saying it solves every single problem, but it solves the problem of bulldozing a house down and starting over because you're not going to build in this day and age another building for $100,000.
We could put square, I mean, I, I also want to check the Texas law because I know we, they changed the law at the last session about...
You can't do it on value.
Right. Well, you just said $100,000.
Right, the, the pools is what's referenced in the 100,000. All residential remodels, regardless of the valuation, are a no-fee permit.
Right, but we could do a square footage exemption on additions. Basically, square footage more than X percentage would count as new construct, would fall under new construction.
Correct.
So that's, that's a way to handle that. Just need to talk to Jackie and Danny and see what number that ought to be.
And, but I'm, I'm not sure. I have to reread the Texas law. We're not allowed to charge a fee based upon value.
Right, that's why I was suggesting...
If you're building 100,000, you, you pay $100, 110, you pay more, 150 more, we're just setting an arbitrary limit, nothing or something. So I'll be happy to review that law, but I think you still could keep our fee schedule the way it is. And I'll verify that.
Okay, so I guess are, are you going to be able, bring, maybe bring us back something, Jackie?
Yes, we'll bring you back.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
And I would like the, the re-inspections. I mean, at some point, we may need to talk about that.
Okay, let's move to item 11 then, which is discussion of possible action regarding an appointment to the Montgomery County Emergency Communication District Board of Managers.
Counsel, as you're seeing your agenda pack, we received a letter indicating that we have an unexpired term that was vacated by Jackie Yates when he retired from the City of Montgomery and his term that was about to start. The current city manager of Montgomery, Richard Tramm, has offered to fill the unexpired term and the next term. And if, if counsel is content with that, we can nominate him and send that in.
Make a motion to nominate Richard. Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Brought to nominate Richard Tramm. I have a second by Council McLeod. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, discussion of possible action to renew a mayoral declaration of local state of disaster due to public health emergency. Oh, that's, that's not the, that's not that phone, that's somebody's cell phone.
Sounds like an Amber Alert.
Amber Alert. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the declaration of emergency till June 10th, which I believe is our first meeting in June. Is that correct?
I have a motion by Council McLeod to extend to June 10th. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Gristy. I have a question. Do we know what the counties is? I know the county just extended. Do we know what, what their extension date was?
I do not, but we can find out.
Okay, for now, we'll just do June 10th and we can always worry about the county later between now and then. Any more discussion?
I hope it's the last one.
Yeah, right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 13, discussion of possible action to adopt the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, providing for the appointment to fill the positions of place two and place three on the Shenandoah Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Raymaker. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? I would just like to say for the record, thank you to those two residents who are willing to serve, greatly appreciated. And if you're not careful, start out on P and Z, you might end up on city council or even as mayor.
Oh, Mayor, I think it's...
Welcome to the team.
And you can apply for these things and just keep your, you know, your application on record when something comes up.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, just because these two got filled doesn't mean we won't need more people to serve as, as we continue going. So please do come apply. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I would also like to say, I should have stated to David Ash and Bob Galatas, I believe, are the two departing.
Correct.
I would also like to say that I greatly appreciate their service during their terms and they will be missed. Not that they're going anywhere, but we appreciate their service on the planning and zoning.
And they've only got a year, they can reapply.
That's right. Item 14, discussion of possible action to amend the civic club bylaws.
Counsel, this came up recently. As the civic club has changed over the years, we've had a difficult time filling the officer positions. In fact, we went through several passes before we filled the positions for the current civic club. So for continuity of operations, some council proposed that we have the staff liaison serve as the, to oversee the meetings. And that way, as the volunteer base changes or members change, that will be a continuity. Now, the staff liaison may change too, but less frequently. Secondly, it will allow the volunteer base, the civic club members and the other, other volunteers to do what they do best, and that is to plan and execute the events. And there seems to be a preference toward, they each have kind of a piece of each event and they run it and they, they take care of it. And that is where the preference has gone to. So we see this as just continuing operations, some consistency. And I will add that Debbie is our current staff liaison to the civic club. Debbie automatically handles the bulk of the purchasing, the budgeting, that sort of thing. The, the civic club discusses it, but a, a great amount of the, that, that kind of work is done by staff already. So I think that will also free up the civic club again to do what they enjoy, what they do well.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Brought. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I was looking at was the city employee and the, the question... and the question about whether or not that's, should be appointed by council or by city administrator. I think currently it's a city administrator. And it just, I just was going to throw that out there for discussion. You know, we nominate the two city council members and we vote on those two by, um, by council. And in addition, the, in the past, before these offices, they would be proposed by the civic club and then again ratified by council. So I just am putting that out there that maybe the city employee is a similar situation where the administrator proposes it and then the council ratifies it or.
I trusted Kathy, I'll just appoint the right person.
Being, being on the, as one of the council members there, we really have no say in that. So, but I hear your point.
I'm just throwing that out there because that's.
No, I hear your point.
Because you guys are elected based on council action, right? So.
I think, I think Kathy and Bill, don't the bylaws right now say that council has say in?
Ultimately, the council has the say-so. If council.
We're changing it tonight, that's why I was.
Well, you're changing tonight and that's the example. If, if city council doesn't like something about the way the civic club is run, it's council that changes it. My own feeling about it is with two councilmen on civic club.
Yeah.
If you don't like the city employee, it'll be made known to city administrator.
I would say it's better, I would say it's better leaving it with the city administrator rather than council because if there's a problem or an issue, we don't have to wait for a council meeting for it to be taken care of, it can be taken care of now.
Agreed.
Just as if it were, I mean, as a city employee, if there's an issue, then the city administrator is the one that's going to deal with it. If there's a promotion to be made, then it's the city administrator that, you know, is going to make that promotion. Unless it's a department head, then it's brought up to council for approval. But I would say that it's probably better for the city administrator to make that call.
But a good point.
I'd like to add that Debbie does a wonderful job with the civic club. They have a great rapport with her. She's always on top of everything in terms of the events and letting everybody know what's going on. So it's, it's running very well this way so far.
Well, yeah, you hear great things, so.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Debbie. Item 15, discussion of possible action regarding approval of the 2020 budget workshop dates.
Mayor and council, at the March 11th meeting, we approved the budget calendar for the upcoming budget year with the request that I bring back workshop dates to be finalized at a later date. Currently, we have the workshop dates for July 31st and August 1st and we do have an alternate for the 7th and 8th. So just tonight, we just need to have a definite answer for taxes that's reported and for public notice postings.
I'm good with 31st and 1st.
I could do either, but the 7th and 8th are ideal. And there's no Packer game on either one.
It might not be a Packer game at all.
They'll be playing D football.
Yeah, I mean, it's so far out, I have no idea. I do know that my son's birthday is on the 2nd, so maybe 7th and 8th would be better. I don't know. I guess my vote would be for the 7th and 8th.
And I've checked with staff and everyone's available either one.
I'm good for either one.
A motion we approve?
I have no preference.
Uh, motion, we approve which dates?
7th and 8th, you said, right?
7th and 8th, okay. So to have a motion by Councilman Brott, well, yeah, have a motion by Councilman Brott to approve the 2020 budget workshop dates for August 7th and 8th.
Um, I got a conflict. Let me, let me double check that.
My preference would be 1st and 3rd.
Is it, is it a football game?
Where'd it go? Yeah, I'm in in-service on 7th. Yeah, we're starting back really early. Like, I go back to school for training the 4th, so I'm in in-service all day.
Reprogramming.
So I've got a conflict with 7th.
You want to go forward with your motion or amend it?
No, I'd be glad to amend it if, if, I'm good with any of the dates myself, so I'm.
You're the one that made the motion, so you have.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'll just rescind my motion.
It may be a one-day deal. I don't think we have any capital improvement projects.
Good point.
Obviously, the H is fine, but.
Sure, meeting ahead of time in all of our meetings, it, I mean, we're basically going to just be going through department heads and sure that'll go fairly quick because we're going to be meeting about those in a series of meetings before that, so.
Yes, correct. So there are several.
I would hate for there to be surprises.
We do have it laid out for the council meetings before the budget workshop to go through several departments. You'll get cover sheets that will show the differences again. So if there's anything you want to focus on, we can try to push it for those council meetings and then maybe try to do a one-day budget workshop. It's totally up to you. Just let me know.
Yeah, we still got all the taxation, the sinking and interest fund. We've got a lot to talk about, so.
So do I have another motion? Council McLeod?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do it on 31st and 1st.
I have a motion by Council McLeod to set the budget workshop dates of the 31st and 1st. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Gristy. Do we have any more discussion? Only if my son wants to have his birthday party on the 1st, I'm going to the birthday party. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. We will set our budget workshop date. I'm going to put that on my phone right now or I'll forget.
That's what I'm doing.
Uh, okay, item 16, discussion regarding the 2021 council budget requests.
Mayor and council, sorry.
Oh, it's just discussion only.
Mayor and council, this was a procedure that we implemented about two years ago to give council more of an input on some projects or some major purchases or even just budgeted additions they would like to see. This year, we only had one that was submitted to, for further review, and that was for the Holly Hill Park. So what staff is requesting tonight is just a little bit more guidance on that project per the outcome of the town hall meeting we had and some of the other discussions, kind of trying to figure out what we want to start with, what we want to look more into, anything and everything. We're here to take notes and, so that we can go back and get more information and have it ready for budget workshop.
I mean, if somebody really wants to bring it to budget workshop, then please give staff some direction. But I can tell you that me personally, if you're asking my direction, is we don't need to build a park next year. I think, I think we need to hunker down. That's my direction.
Yeah, I think.
I want to see where we're at. And that's, you know, I have a feeling that that's going to be the answer, but we, we already have the work, so I wasn't asking for staff to do.
If you want to get an estimate, say, for drainage, but I, right now, I wouldn't fund anything.
I mean, we've been, we've been in this.
I think we are going to estimate for everything for that park and.
What was, what was it that staff was going to bring to workshop? If it was your item, what was, you were looking for an additional?
It's basically the same thing, to see, to see where we were. I mean, by the time we get to July, we should really have a better idea of where we are in income and based on March receipts and then I'm sure shortly we'll get April's receipts. I think we're going to know where we are. But when I was asked, this is what I put forward, because we have most of the planning. I mean, the only, the only difference really is to look at the new, the new lighting possibility, which, you know, we talked about. The actual park is like $100,000 and I think if we wanted to light it, we'd have to add an additional $200,000 and that's what kind of blew it all up. We've already paid for landscaping design. Some of that anyway, we allocated the money. We actually have some of the money allocated that we could use for drainage. So we, we kind of have pieces of it. It wouldn't cost a whole lot more to finish it up. But the only difference would be to see on the parks, on the lights, lighting, we put it toddler park, how much that would reduce the overall cost of that project. But otherwise, we're not looking for a lot of staff time. Just kind of see what, see what that would, I mean, it's something that citizens have been asking for, for, for a number of years.
Once again, just information, it doesn't hurt to look at it.
Right, that's, and that's, that's all I'm asking. I mean, by the time, by the time we get to the end of July, we may all be.
We have a better idea of where we are.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have, I'm hoping we'll have a better idea. And we'll be on the upswing and our economy will be taking off like a jet plane and ready to go.
Counsel, if I could add, Joseph and I have been discussing this. And another option, just for your information only, is to take a look at the drainage improvements first because that will have to be done before the park can proceed. We do have a proposal from Blial Engineering to design that, take a look at it. So that could be brought to budget workshop just for, for information. We can take a look at the cost of those drainage improvements and then move to a future budget year for the park itself. That'll give us time to take a look at the lights at the toddler park, see how that we like them, how they're doing and get some new numbers on, on the park itself. Landology did work on some concepts. We can circle back to those in the future too and see, see what we want to do with that. So that's another possibility if you'd like us to bring that to budget workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, to move on to item 17 then, which is discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the April 8th, 2020 regular meeting.
Will there be approved as read?
Have a motion by Councilman Brott?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 18, which is our second citizens forum. I think Chris is going to go see if we have anybody on the line.
I called in earlier, they gave them a minute to call back, but it was, it was questionable.
Okay. If, if you called in earlier and you would like to call back or if you didn't get a chance to call in, the number again is 832-585-8138. Getting that number is 832-585-8138. We'll give it just a second to see if anybody calls in. Okay, we're going to move on to item 19 then. Item 19 is city administrator updates. Oh, we do have somebody on the line? Oh, never mind.
Colette White, 401. 402 will not give us any information, so. Hi, Colette.
Yes.
Hi, you're on.
Yeah, I'm on. Okay, my name is Colette White and I had just a few questions. On those new city signs, are they going to be designed of wood, which potentially would be fading after a few years in our sun? Another question I had was on the $6 million water treatment improvement. If you take the $6 million without the interest, that, and you finance it over 20 years, that comes out to $25,000 a month. If the residents are paying 20% of that, that would be $5,000 a month. If you say just roughly 2,500 residents, that would be $2 a month per resident. So I'm a little confused by the numbers, the increase that the life engineering suggested. Also, I was wondering what the current capacity of the water treatment plant is and what kind of improvements are going to be made for $6 million and what would the capacity be after these improvements? Another question I had is when they built the concrete wall on the I-45 Cedar Road so that it forced the lane to turn left going west on Research, they could no longer go straight. Could we do something like that on the corner of Grosvenor going north at Research Forest so that that person in the left-turn lane doesn't go straight and cause the other car to go into the sign that usually happens? That's why our sign's been down since September. I hope that was clear enough. The other thing, we talked about last year about delineators being put up on the southbound I-45 Cedar Road going onto westbound Research Forest. I was wondering if there's a date when that might be happening? And that's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. White. We'll get somebody to.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. White, can you give us your email address real quick?
It's momcoletti, M-O-M-C-O-L-E-T-T-I at gmail dot com.
Joseph, can you address these? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if this is important too. City of Shenandoah, are you on?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm calling in regards to the interim chief of police. Hello?
Can you, yes, so you're on YouTube?
I'm sorry, this is awkward. I would go in person, but I can't.
That's okay.
I wanted you to take a closer look because I did a deep dive and I want you to look at his prior, I don't know how to say this. His prior relations with subordinates on file. And I also want you to look at how he built the city, not once, but I think twice, if I, if I read it correctly, for his college tuition. You can ask Kathy about that, she's aware. And I just don't think that's a very good example of integrity. I mean, I don't want this, do you? Do you want this in charge of our safety? I know my parents don't. I mean, we live here and I really don't feel safe. And I want to chase that is, that is kind and has integrity and cares about me and not about himself. I did a deep dive on his Facebook account, I'm sorry, his YouTube. And I'm not really crazy about what I see and I'm kind of scared. I'm hesitant to say who I am and where I live. But my God, my parents live here. Please find, you've got to find somebody else.
Thank you for the.
You have to find somebody with integrity, someone that won't steal money. I mean, they're stealing money from us.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the call.
Anyway, why? Why? Why are you, you're brushing me off. Say something.
No, we, we have a time limit, I'm sorry.
No, I have not. I have three minutes. Do you want to say something about it?
Do we know how much time we have left? Two minutes left? You have one minute left?
Yeah, I have two minutes left.
Yeah, you have one minute left.
But you're required to state your name for the record.
I have to restate my name? Okay, I'm Maria Vasquez and I live in Sunnydale. Are you going to come find me? I mean, come on. You guys know that this is not right. This is insane. Say something.
We're not, we're not allowed to deliberate with you during the citizens forum, ma'am. We can hear your comments and we appreciate you calling in, but we are not allowed to deliberate with you.
Yes, you are. You are, it's open forum. I have rights. I live here, I pay taxes, I have somebody stealing from me that has no integrity.
You're at 30 seconds? Yeah. We're, I'm just letting you know.
Sorry?
We're at 30 seconds. 30 seconds left, yes, ma'am.
30 seconds, ma'am.
So what do you have to say about it? I want to hear something.
Maybe I'm not allowed to deliberate? Okay, that's, your three minutes are up. Thank you for calling.
Uh-huh, have a nice night.
Okay, one more. Shannon Sullivan.
Okay, one more, Shannon Sullivan, that's four more. Hello, Shannon, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can't.
I can barely hear you, are you, can you?
Let me, let me, can you get me some time a little bit later?
There you go.
One second.
Okay.
That's a while, let's go, can you hear me?
Okay, that's perfect.
Okay, good. Um, I, I called in a little bit late, so I kind of heard y'all talking about the park that was going at Holly Hill. And I just have a quick question. I'm the last house in the corner of Deadwood. And City Public Works has been out here and talked to me before. It's got that large vacant lot right behind me, I believe it's owned by a doctor that holds a lot of water, so therefore my yard stays underwater when we have a lot of rain. And it's completely rotted, uh, the fence between me and my neighbor, which we're going to have to have replaced, um, this week. Um, I just want to know, when y'all talked about drainage, are y'all addressing that piece? Because it's on the inside of the fence, not the outside part of the park. But it would be easily diverted if y'all could get access to that end of. You know, it's just a really simple, small grooming to make the water drain off properly. It would really be hugely beneficial.
I see Joseph over there taking notes, so I'm, I'm going to assume that he's probably going to look into that for us.
Yeah, y'all been here to see me before, and basically it was, you know, that the doctor that owns the land is, you know, not reasonable or is difficult, and, you know, and I get that, but I'm just that short of hopping over the fence and taking a shovel back there myself. It's, you know, it's so easy to fix it. And, but the damage that the water does is pretty significant, you know?
We will definitely take a look into that again.
That was it.
Thank you, thanks for calling.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, bye-bye.
That's it.
Thank you, Chris. Let me just state for the record, I hate this, I'd be glad when people could come back up here again.
I agree.
This is, this is.
Totally.
This is as hard on us as it is on y'all, I promise you. Uh, we would much rather that y'all were here. So, having said that, um, we will move, uh, we will move to. Did I already call you Kathy, or no? I feel like I already said City Administrator.
We were about to do it.
But I guess not.
You're about to.
Yeah, I remember it was just about, oh, that's what it was, and we got a call, okay. So, City Administrator, City Administrator Updates.
All right, I'll be quick. Uh, first of all, the water tower. Uh, I'm sure you guys have noticed the tent over the tower, it's completely tented, and the exterior sandblasting has started. So that project's rocking right along. Uh, the parks were opened on Monday, this past Monday, May eleventh. All the equipment is available except for the splash pad. So I'm sure that the residents are happy to have the park more available to them. The pool is scheduled to open this Saturday, the sixteenth, with a maximum of twenty-five percent capacity. And that means fifty patrons at any one time. So Woody is going to be managing the flow of, uh, visitors to the pool, any arrangements of furnishings to, um, assist with social distancing. And the pool will be open weekends only through the month of May, including Memorial Day. And that's all I've got.
Okay, moving to item twenty, which is Council Inquirer, and we will start with Councilman McLeod.
Well, you took care of the, the pool and the parks, so that's fantastic. Um, I wanted to ask maybe Kathy or John where we're at with the, uh, the ad campaign as Shenandoah starts to open back up with the rest of the state.
John has, he's, he's mapped out, uh, a one, two, and three-month plan. We're going to initiate with, with one approach, then progress through the, the next two months. We've managed to lock in some good rates. Um, we, he is working on the creative with, uh, the ad agency and will have, uh, the goal is to be ready to go, as council has requested. Um, right now, a lot of the restaurants aren't even open yet, other than takeout. So, we're not there yet, but we're going to, the goal is to be ready. So we've got the, uh, the, uh, schedule mapped out with the Chronicle and the, uh, the other publications and the digital platform. So, we're, we're progressing. Did, John, if you have anything to add?
No, I mean, that's, that's really pretty much it. We, uh, we have tomorrow.
You can be on the mic if you're speaking, John.
Can you go up to the podium perhaps, or take the mic for me?
He doesn't.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
No, um, we've, we've been making some progress, as Kathy said, mapping things out. We're working on this campaign and trying to dovetail it with some other projects we're doing. We've been working heretofore on this part, much like a lot of our peers, the Woodlands, Conroe, trying to do social media, trying to do our posting on who's open, what, what are they doing? Um, in this campaign, we've pulled together some options to do digital campaigns with some, um, unique program capabilities. And we're looking right now at kind of moving those forward with both Eastern Chronicle and Community Impact. And so, those are, discussions are all underway. We're working on the creative, as Kathy said, and hope to have something to discuss for y'all probably at this next Council meeting.
Yeah, hopefully the, the governor will start opening us back up. And that's why, I just wanted to make sure we were, we were in on pro, on, on track, so that when, when he opens us back up, we can, we can get.
And that's, and that's the point all along, is to get it done in the can. So essentially, when that does happen, we can just hit a go button.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mayor Protop?
Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
Captain Christie?
I'm good, sir.
Captain Fletcher?
Just a quick question on the pool. Um, since we're limited to fifty patrons at a time, is there a time limit on those that come in first? Have we put any rules into play as to how that may work, or can we even re-enter, or?
So I've discussed that with our pool operator. Uh, and the plan is now, um, of course, we're going to place by here to see how much volume we have. We have a very low number of people who have actually registered for the pool. Uh, but we'll see what happens. Uh, but the plan now is, um, let people in as, as we hit capacity. If we have people waiting at the gate, then what, um, pool operator will do with the lifeguards is at, whenever the pool break is, they'll make an announcement that people are now waiting to get into the pool and ask for voluntary, uh, people leave voluntarily to make room for other patrons. And we'll see how that goes on the first day.
So if nobody volunteers to leave, then what?
Then the people there, it's going to be a first come, first served.
That's not actually fifty people inside the water of the pool, that's fifty people inside the pool area.
Correct, that includes the deck and the pool in that calculation.
I would say if we're in the water, it's pretty hard to social distance.
I'm, I don't, I've, I've, the reason why I say is I've never seen fifty people in that pool at once, and, or my kids go there a lot of, you, you rarely see fifty people up there at the facility at once.
Right.
And I think that's, that's why the plan is to just kind of let, let it happen.
Hopefully, it won't be an issue. Anything else, Councilman Fletcher?
That's all I got, thank you.
Councilman Raymaker?
No, I passed, but I'll be glad when people can come in in person again.
Yeah, me too.
Right.
Along Councilman Fletcher's point though, um, you know, just be responsible, folks, please. You know, we're not, we're, we're trying really, really, really hard to not, uh, to not bog down with a bunch of rules and can't, can't do this and can't do that. And we're just really trying to, um, leave it up to, up to everybody to do, you know, do what they know they should be doing, you know, keep practicing social distancing. Um, don't, you know, I got a text while we were in this meeting that somebody was at the park and there was a five-on-five basketball game going on. It's like, do we really have to do that right now? I mean, don't, you know, and, and those aren't folks that are probably going to watch our YouTube, uh, City Council meeting, so I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, you know, talking to a brick wall right now, but, uh, but I'm just frustrated because I would like to think that our residents could, uh, manage themselves, and I know that they can, um, and they can, and they can be responsible. So just, you know, just try to do that as it relates to the pool, as it relates to the tennis courts, the basketball courts, the park equipment, um, be responsible, uh, help spread the word. I don't expect anybody to go up and, uh, go police the basketball court for us, that's not what I'm asking for. But, um, let's just all try to be responsible, that's, that's all I've got on that. Uh, one question for Kathy. Where are we at on our Wellman loop? Have we heard anything from our friends at Entergy lately?
I'm trying to get the mic to work here. Uh, I have not heard from them in about a week. Uh, I know that they did some staking out there, they had their, their cabinets were in, they were going to have them delivered. Um, I believe they've done some work nearby the pool. I'll get a more detailed update from you. They are also, for the most part, working remotely, so.
Sure.
There's, that has kind of delayed the communications a little bit, but I'll, I'll get an update. In fact, Doug McCormick called me and I owe him a return call, so that'll be a good opportunity to get that, that info.
Well, I can report from my walk that, you know, the foundation is there and the transformer is there.
Good, well.
Conduits are underground.
Hopefully, we're not too far off then.
Scout says they look nice.
I'm not going to ask any questions. Okay, well, if nobody has anything else with that, uh, we are going to move into executive session. Uh, we will move into executive session at eight forty-one, and we are going to go talk about personnel matters as they relate to, uh, Police Chief. We will recess the regular meeting. Uh, thanks, everybody.